You guys are in for a treat tonight. We have two meetings. Butch is gone and I'm in control, so let's keep the making fun of people to a minimum. Alright, we do have two meetings tonight. First, we have a public hearing regarding the 2018-2019 school calendar as stated in section 171.031 RSMO. A district may set an opening date that is more than ten calendar days prior to the first Monday in September, only if the local school board first gives public notice of the public meeting to discuss a proposal of opening school on a date more than ten days prior to the first Monday in September. Is there any speakers here that want to make a comment regarding approving the calendar that has a start date more than ten days prior to the first Monday in September? Raise your hand. Do both. Alright then, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Please stand up for the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we differ. We're up to speed on that, aren't we?
That figures. Need a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keeling?
Second.
Mr. Anderson, second. All in favor? Six oh, Megan. Citizens' participation in statements?
Mr. Vice President, we had no request for citizens' participation this month.
Number five, written communications?
Mr. Vice President, we did receive one written correspondence, which the board has been notified of, and if you were not able to pick up your packet at the district office, you will receive a copy this evening.
Citizens' update. Military lasane, oh, uh, update?
I gotcha. Good evening, Mr. President. Just a couple announcements. Fort Leonard Wood will host their community information forum on Tuesday, 28th November, starting at 10:30 in the USO Building. Some of the topics they're gonna talk about are the snare operations and holiday block leave, and also presentations from the chaplain, the Lions Club, blood donor, MoDOT, and a few others. And so the meeting is open to the public. Limited amount of free Christmas trees will be available, and donated by FedEx. About 500 trees will be available on one December, starting at 1400 at the Auto Craft Shop. It opens up for active-duty military and their spouse, and after a couple days, then we open it up for DOD civilians. The annual installation tree lighting will take place at Fort Leonard Wood on 5 December. It'll be in a new location. It'll be adjacent to the Misco Plaza. It starts at 17:30. A lot of games, activities, and so forth, and a visit from Big Red on the fifth of December for the tree lighting. So, and that's all we have.
That's Andy Reid?
Not Big Orange, Big Red.
Yeah, understand.
Okay. And something to eat. I'm sorry. I gotcha.
Alright.
That's all we had.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
District announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. First of all, it's wonderful to see so many people here this evening. We have our 100% compliance row up front, so a little special education, folks here. And our fine Partridge Elementary crew in back. Look at them all back there. Congratulate, yep. This is the night that they get honored, and also I get to honor them for the Spirit Award here in a little bit, so looking forward to that. So tonight, we'll honor and recognize Partridge Elementary and Pick Educational Volunteer Facility. Also, we have them in the audience. They're small but mighty. Small but mighty. There we are. Okay. And I want to thank each and every one of you for all you do for our students. Look forward to the CTA recognition. On Wednesday, the state released its annual APR scores, and our district scored 95.7% on the State of Missouri's Annual Performance Report, which remains among the district's top scores. Our attendance declined, so we were unable to match the previous year's record-high score, and you will see a renewed effort on our part to emphasize the importance of attendance. I want to congratulate the Waynesville JROTC Raider team for taking fifth place in the Raider Nationals out of 88 teams in Georgia. Now it's drill team season, and Waynesville High School will host its fourth annual drill competition from 8:15 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. on Saturday, December 16. The event is free and open to the public. It's hoops and wrestling season. The varsity wrestling season will kick off at 5:00 p.m. at home on November 30 against Ozark. Always a great time of year to cut weight, by the way. Always a great time of year. The first home varsity girls' basketball game will be December the 11th, and the boys' first varsity home game will be at the Route 66 Shootout, which will be held December 20th and 21st. Costs for admission to each of the day of the shootout is $5 for adults, $4 for students. Athletic passes, senior passes, and school IDs will not be accepted for this as a special event. I would also like to thank the community for the support of the Booster Clubs' tip-off party. It's also that time of year when we pause to give thanks, and we are thankful for our students, families, and staff who make this district great. I want to extend a special thanks to our cooks throughout the district and everyone else who has made or will make our family feasts a success again this year. It's always great for the new administrators in the district to talk about family feast for the first time. It's a truly unique thing for us, and it's always good to give them a little prep time on that. In observance of Thanksgiving, there will be no school Wednesday, November 22 through Friday, November 24. Students will return Monday, November 27. The district is sending out emails this week inviting business leaders to partner with the district through our Tiger Connection program by serving as a guest speaker, reading to students, displaying artwork, or other activities you would like us to take part in. If anyone's interested, they can call 573-842-2040. I'll also want to invite our public to attend our numerous fine arts performances. The list will be included in your Eye and the Tiger, which will be coming out here at the end of the month. A few highlights include Thayer Elementary Bells and Choir, 6:00 p.m. on December 5. One Act Plays at Waynesville High School, December 8 and 9. Waynesville Middle School Concert, 7:00 p.m. December 13 at the Waynesville High School Auditorium. December 14, we have the Band and Jazz Band Christmas Concert at 6:00 p.m. in the WHS Theater. I also want to say thank you to our jazz band. They provided music on the way in. It was nice and soothing, so they're all very happy here. They were serenaded or, you know, music during study sessions, so very happy. And December 16, Choir Christmas Concert at 6:00 p.m. WHS Theater. December 20 will be a half-day of school, and then winter break begins on December 21 through January 3 of 2018. January 3 is actually Teacher in Service Day, so students start back on January 4. Lots of announcements from Mrs. Ward this month.
Alright, consent agenda A. Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the financials for November, Bank of Crocker with MOSIP, $41,464,011.44. CDs with the Bank of Crocker, $10.5 million. General account, $1,188,885.50. And the payroll account, $5,743.77. Total funds, $53,158,640.71.
Make a motion on approval of the consent agenda for C, closed session minutes of 10:05 2017. Study session minutes for 10:16 217. Regular session minutes for 10:16 2017. And closed session minutes for 10:16 2017. Do you have a motion?
Make your motion.
Mr. Quinn, second. Dr. Fulmer, all in favor?
I'm staying. I wasn't here last one.
Five one. Mr. Anderson, abstain. Student recognitions, we're gonna skip that tonight. We have a little cross-up. Number nine, CTA Spotlight on Education. Mrs. Vernon?
I'm gonna start us off with a quick little video that our news leaders created, and then I'm gonna hand it over to Ms. Jacobson.
it just a little bit early, but we returned it, so.
Oh. Gee, thanks. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Tonight, I have the privilege to honor Mrs. Sarah Allen and Mr. Stacy Witt as our CTA Spotlight. Mrs. Allen is in her fifth year of teaching at Partridge Elementary. Her first two years were in second grade, and she is in her third year of teaching fifth grade. Anyone you talk to will definitely mention Sarah's willingness to try new strategies to engage her students. When you walk into Mrs. Allen's classroom, you will see students collaborating and technology in their hands. She is a team player and offers to help whenever there is a need. She always puts her students first and tries everything she can to help them be successful. Mrs. Allen is a leader in the building and serves on the PBIS and LEED Committee. When Mrs. Allen is not with us at Partridge, she is at home spending time with her husband and two dogs. I would like to share some quotes from students in her classroom. "I like how she groups us and teaches us in fun ways. She is always calm, and if she notices someone sad or having a bad day, she checks in with them." "She does really fun science experiments and writing prompts." Her teammates shared, "Sarah is always willing to help in any way she can. She has great ideas for integrating technology into all of her lessons and is an awesome resource. She cares about all of her kids and does whatever she can to help them to succeed." Another said, "Sarah is very good with all things technology. Need a cahoot for Friday? Sarah will make one. Can't get your document camera working? Sarah will fix it. She regularly helps me with anything I need help with and never makes me feel bad about not knowing how to do something. Sarah, congratulations. We so appreciate you at our school." Thank you. I now have the honor to introduce Stacy Witt, or Mr. Stacy as he is known at Partridge. We could also call him Mr. Happy, because there is seldom a time where Mr. Stacy does not have a smile on his face. This is Stacy's 14th year in the district. Five of them have been at Partridge Elementary. Stacy goes above and beyond to make students and parents feel welcome and make our work environment a place we want to be. If you visit Partridge during lunch, you will see Mr. Stacy giving fist bumps to students as he assists them with their trays. If it's not a fist bump, he is handing out a tiger buck to students who are portraying good behavior or celebrating their birthday. There is never a delay when you call him over the radio. He always arrives with a smile on his face. Stacy takes pride in everything he does, and our building always looks great, thanks to him. Stacy enjoys spending time with his wife Betty and son and daughter, Arcade and Sadie. Fellow staff members shared the following. "He makes such a difference here at our school. He works hard to meet our needs and to keep our building up to par. The most important thing about him is his positive attitude. When it comes to students, he takes time to make them feel important. He also provides the needed smile that we all need." Another said, "He is a strong part of this Partridge family. He helps support children as responsible leaders and is a very supportive member of our PBIS program. Stacy helps bring a smile to everyone's face every day. Fist bumps at lunch are a necessary component of our students' daily routine." Students shared the following. "Mr. Stacy is generous and makes our school spotless." And another said, "Mr. Stacy is the best, and he is always smiling."
It's rare, but it's not, you know.
Thank you.
Oh, new wall.
It's been there for three months.
Only last month.
It's been there three or four months now.
Okay.
Yes, too. We had a graduation.
Wasn't it?
Hey, Stace, Stacy. I know you had long bridges. I thought it was yours.
You guys ready to pick?
We chose our best-looking teacher to do this.
Is he giving it to himself, though?
Yes. Can you hear me? I was told there'd be a microphone, so I'm pretty excited about that. Let's see. It kinda got me off-guard. The hair, just so you know, a lot of biotin. I'm bringing it back, so I've been using a lot of biotin. Oh, I'm talking.
And time.
This is happening. So, Mr. Wayland emailed me and asked me if I'd want to be the CTA rep. I believe that's correct, right? CTA rep. I'm gonna look for you. You're engaged, Demi, so I'm, you're my go-to guy. And my wife, also. I'm gonna look at her when I get nervous. But asked me if I wanted to do the CTA, and I was like, "Yeah, sure," you know, "'cause I'm the new guy, and there must not be enough of anybody else who wants to do it, so I'll do it." Yeah. Oh, I'm still talking truce. Still talking truce. But anyway, I was like, "Yeah, no problem. I'd love to talk about pick, 'cause nobody knows where it's at." So that's, you know, it's a little disheartening. Sometimes I ask my wife, you know, "Where's your husband working?" And she tells him, "Works in the district," and she tells him "pick," and they say, "Where's that?" And then they say, "Oh, that must be where all the bad kids go, and he must have a tough job." And we don't have all the bad kids. We have the kids that struggle. And so I do love what I do, and I love going to pick. I do gotta give a shout-out to Dr. Henry, because we're from Camington, not from Camston. We're from Kansas City, so don't get that straight. We just made a stop at Camington. And then he came to Waynesville, and I was like, "Man, he must know something I don't know." So as soon as I can get away, I'm going. And there was an opportunity at the alternative school. I emailed Dr. Henry, and he said they had this program going and sounded pretty cool. Sounded like a new challenge, and kinda thought that my tools and kinda thought that my craft, I was kinda getting stale at it, and so took on this opportunity at pick. Mr. Wayland interviewed me, didn't call me back for a couple weeks, so I started to get a little bit nervous, and I'm like, "Dude, I need a job, so I don't know. Would you just take a chance and hire me?" Which he did, so that was nice. And came aboard, and the school was kind of a mess. Classrooms were full of stuff, and luckily I had Mr. Finger to give me all the stuff that he didn't want, and, you know, that's a true story. And so the way that the school looked from the first day last year to where it is today is absolutely amazing, and it's phenomenal. And the things that we get to do for kids are phenomenal. And we do have the troubled kids. We have the kids that have huge anxieties. We have the kids that enjoy napping, you know, for about 22 hours a day. Just give me two hours. Two hours to wake up. And, but, I'm losing my train of thoughts. Okay, I have notes. I have notes. First one, thank you Board of Education, and thank you to the administration for keeping the school open. One of the things I love about pick, besides the kids, are my teammates. I'm, no offense to Partridge, 'cause you guys, well, there's much more of you than us, so we work as a true team. And I know that Dr. Henry's big thing is that what is best practice for children or kids at the end of the day. And not only do we live by that, we live by that every hour. We talk about our kids after every class period, what kids are on, what kids are off. In the morning, Mr. Wayland, we do a little pow-wow with our pairs, Mr. Isel and Ms. Atkins, and we talk about how the day's gonna go, and then we have to adjust on the fly. So we don't just collaborate on Wednesdays. We literally have to do it every day, and we do it after every class period. I know, it's exhausting. It's exhausting, but it's absolutely fabulous. We still have kids that have problems. There's no doubt about that. But we have the best kids in the district, 'cause I think we have the best staff in the district. We're willing to work hard. We're willing to be flexible, and we'll do anything it takes to try and get that kid through. And sometimes, you know, honestly, those kids that are destined and don't want to make it, you know, well, they'll find a way probably to maybe sabotage themselves. Those kids that we have that are gonna make it no matter what, we just kinda help them get over the hump. Those kids would probably make it all the way, too, but it's a lot of in-betweens that aren't sure where they want to go, and that's where I feel like we make a difference. And I feel like if you look at a kid from when he came into our program to when he ends our program, I would dare say that most of them are probably a better student today than they were. A better human being, not even a student. 'Cause at pick, we have to deal with everything that we all have to deal with as educators. But I think we're the most hard-working, most phenomenal team in the district. I don't just say that lightly. Ms. Cogdill came in to be our, I call her the Assistant Principal. She has another title that, I'm not, it's, you know, something, but she's a rock star. Does everything we do. Mr. Hall is a new teacher. He fit right in with us. And then after he does a half-day with us, he has to go and manage all kinds of crazy hours to work with other students, and he's willing to do anything, come in any time to work with our kids. So I had, like I said, I had a whole bunch of things to say, but I love our kids. I love our staff, and I think we have the best staff in the district. So there was no, there was no way that I could present one thing to any one person, although I kinda thought they would all give it to me. But since I'm giving the speech, I decided I'd share it with everybody. And so I'd like them to come up, so you guys can recognize them.
They told me how shy you were gonna be. Didn't know if they'd get anything out of you, so congratulations on getting past that. Staff recognitions. Spirit Award, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Did I get the award back to you?
Well, I appreciate Mrs. Vernon returning the award, so I can present it to her this evening. But no, tonight, it's a great night to recognize all of our buildings, but in particular, we have our Fall Spirit Award to give out tonight. And when I was doing my little building tours, like I like to do, Melissa told me, she said, "We're not trying very hard this year." And I said, "Oh, okay," and she said, "Don't even look at it," you know, "Don't even look at the float." I found out that was just trying to throw me off the scent, sabotaging. They think like I go around and tell everybody exactly what they're doing on the float, so they can improve upon that. But no, they've done an excellent job, and Partridge is a great group, great family. I always enjoy going out there and speaking to them, and I'm very pleased tonight to re-present our Fall Spirit Award to the Partridge faculty.
So I gotta share something real quick?
Wanna share something? Sure, go ahead.
So Mrs. Draley said, "We never got that last year." I said, "You've always had it. No one else has ever had it. It's always been in your building."
Three, gosh.
May we get the faculty to help you?
Thank you.
Eleven. Community recognitions. Missouri Sports Hall of Fame induction, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. It's a real pleasure tonight to be, and even though we're, we might be among the last, I hope one of the more important to recognize Coach Vernon. And I have to tell you, the first time that I became aware of Coach Vernon, you know, being a young kid coming out of Kansas City, I didn't know much outside of my little area there, but I got to Coach Bryan in an All-Star game. So Coach, when we go up here tonight, this is a green screen. We'll both look a lot younger, 'cause people probably didn't realize I was old enough to coach Bryan, in an All-Star game. So when he was graduating, so, but I do want to read a few things. Coach Vernon has meant so much to our school district and our community, and it's a real honor to recognize him. So I hope these dates don't hurt you, Coach, but they told me to start back in the late 1960s. In the central Missouri town of Eldon, football fans cheered as Rick Vernon became an All-State running back. Vernon coached for more than three decades and was 222 and 169 overall. That's 25th-best in state history, according to the Hall of Fame. Vernon got his start as an assistant coach at Odessa. He became the head coach at Lone Jack High School, and then served as the head coach for 33 years at Waynesville High School, where in 2007, his team won the Class V State Title. And I'm gonna hop off script for a minute. I just wanted to tell you how much Coach Vernon means in the coaching circle. One of my close friends that I played football with in college coached at Lone Jack and made the playoffs one time. Coach hadn't been there in about 35 years, probably. He sent a note to my friend about, "Wow, what an accomplishment to make the playoffs at Lone Jack," and he never will forget that, Coach. Vernon guided the Tigers to seven district titles and five mid-Missouri Conference Championships, two Ozark Conference Championships.
two Ozark Conference Championships. He was inducted into the Missouri Football Coaches Association Hall of Fame in 2006 and he was named the Missouri Coach of the Year in 2008. Along the way, Vernon sent three players on to the National Football League, LJ Fort, Gian Robinson, and CJ Mosley. On October 16th, 2017, with his wife Cheryl at his side, Rick Vernon joined the likes of Albert Fred Red Schoendiced, Stan Musial, and a host of other individuals that have been admired for decades when he was inducted to the Missouri Sports Hall of Fame. So we wanted to take this opportunity, Coach, to recognize you. Thank you for all you've meant to, to not just our school district, but our community, all three communities that created us. So at this time, we'd like to recognize Coach Rick Vernon.
Just a couple of things, I didn't know how hard it was going to be up here. I thought down in Springfield was hard, but it's really hard up here. Before I get started, I didn't know this was Partridge Night. And Cheryl and I just happened to go out to Partridge after school today and what a neat experience. It, it took me back probably about, I won't say my age, maybe 55 years, something back when everybody was in Eldon in elementary where back then, you'd get on your bikes, you'd get on your scooters, you'd walk home, do all that. First time I've ever seen that out of Partridge, first time I've ever been there whenever they let out of school and all these kids just took off with their parents. Some was on bikes, some was walking, some was going on scooters and it was just a neat experience. And Stacy, that smile was true. Cheryl and I was out, was it Thursday or Friday for Family Feast? And if you've ever been at Family Feast in the cafeteria, it can be tough, you know? I mean, I mean, parents are coming everywhere and, and all that. And Stacy had that smile. So if he can have it on Family Feast Day, I know he has it every day. So Stacy, congratulations on, on that and I enjoy being out there on those days. Just a few words, school board, school, Waynesville School District, want to thank you for allowing our family to be here. It's been a great experience, a great place to raise a family. Just, just outstanding. And this award isn't, isn't for me. It's, it's for all the players, all the coaches I've had, the three communities that came together and just made this into a great school district, best school district in the state of Missouri. And we love this place. And I want to just thank everybody and probably the one most important person that, that got me through all this was Cheryl. So Cheryl, thanks for being by my side all those nights, getting off the bus and, and helping and all that. But what, what a great place it is to be and thank you a lot. Appreciate it.
Number 12, Discussion Items. A, Special Education Program Review, Dr. Washington.
I have the pleasure of talking about the special ed program that we have here at Waynesville that I'm very excited about. And, and some, I want to recognize my process coordinators, special ed teachers, paras, district assessment team for 100% compliance on our three-year review and they have shirts, matching shirts we have to honor that and with glitter, yes. So we're very, very excited about that. But let's take a moment and talk about our special ed program here at Waynesville. My office is in charge of two areas, effective practices, making sure that we are improving special ed services for all of our students ages three through 21 with disabilities. And we also are charged with compliance, making sure that our program meets all of the compliance state and federal guidelines. Part of our goals for last school year was having a staff member trained to be an in-district autism consultant and that was completed. We also sent two staff members to behavior intervention training that was also completed to provide support for the district. We provide CPI training with, which is Crisis Prevention Institute Training to staff to ensure student safety, we'll continue with that. We looked at widening our services for our special ed students and we added more co-teaching classes at Waynesville Middle School and High School. We're in the, we're in progress of developing a process coordinator handbook. We've developed a Section 504 handbook. We've added mental health staff or access for our students and we hired a full-time homebound teacher. On compliance, like I said, our three-year desk review of our special ed program by DESI was complete with 100% compliance. Very few districts in Missouri received 100, 100% compliance, so we're very excited about that. We trained our staff in MAP-A, which is the Alternative MAP. I did training with writing post-secondary transition plans. We also had training on writing quality IEPs for our students. We made our transition to IEP Plus. Children's Mercy in Kansas City provided training with working with medically fragile students to our therapists. We had a MAP-A Quality Assurance Visit from DESI and we received the top rating for that. We completed our high needs fund application for reimbursement for the first time in Waynesville and we were reimbursed $300,000 for, for our special ed program. And we had our annual private school and homeschool information meeting. So looking forward to our goals for 1718, we would like to expand our teletherapy services. Right now, we offer speech, language, and social work as part of that. We will continue to provide targeted PD for special educators. We want to look at consistency across the district with our special ed process, providing professional development, expanding our special ed delivery model, providing more emotional behavior support, and continuing that high needs fund application. With all of these, we hope to continue to close the gap in academic performance with our general education students. The special education staff that we currently have are up there, I'm not going to read all of them, but we have process coordinators, special ed teachers, speech-language therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, special ed paraprofessionals. We have school social workers now in our district and school psychological examiners, all helping to support our students with special needs. Our special education district profile, we ended the year of 2016-17 with 1,013 students with special needs. That's roughly about 17% of our student population. We had a 4% growth from the year prior. And that just breaks down all of the students that we service by disability category. As you can see, our, our largest area, students with specific learning disabilities, followed closely by other health impairment. Section 504 is also serviced out of my office. Those are for students with disabilities under the Office of Civil Rights. It's different than an IEP, there's different criteria, and we currently service 219 students in our district with Section 504 plans. We have special education classrooms in every building. We're going to share tonight some of those classrooms in our buildings. We, any identifiable pictures, we have parent permission and we wanted to highlight the growth of our program. We'll start with Waynesville High School. Currently, we serve 186 students with IEPs and 115 students with Section 504 plans. We could not do it without amazing teachers at the high school. This is a rundown of all of our teachers, what they teach, the students that they service. We have a variety of special classes at the high school. We have specialized instruction where students have that small group instruction with a special ed teacher and they have access to the general ed curriculum. And then we have co-teaching where a special ed teacher and a general ed teacher deliver the instruction to the students in the general ed classroom. This year, we have two new classes, which I'm very excited about. Transitions, one is for students entering ninth grade, helping them make that transition from the middle school, helping them understand their IEP. Many of them do not realize they're on an IEP or what an IEP is, and helping them advocate for themselves as they go through high school and even that post-secondary process. Then we added transitions, two for our seniors, and that also looks at making them become independent learners and looking at that transition past high school. We have different agencies that come in to work with them to see what they'd like to do once they graduate. We also have a, a program at the Waynesville High School. It's for students with intellectual disabilities and autism. We focus on job shadowing, pre-employment skills, and it's tiered, so depending on the needs and abilities of the student, we match them at the appropriate tier. That leads us into our Transition to Work Program, which we're very excited about. Tiger Joe at Waynesville High School is open. Students work there and, and service other students, they service staff members. It's commercial-grade equipment, just like a Starbucks. Students have workstations at Tiger Joe. We have five-tiered job readiness programs there and we teach a variety of skills for our students. They deliver coffee, tea, and water to the classrooms. Everything is student-led to work on those job skills. We currently complete job shadowing experience at six different local businesses. If you're a business out there and you'd like to partner with us, I'd love for you to contact me. We're always looking to making our program grow for our students. They practice job skills at local hotels by working with laundry, maintenance, and housekeeping departments. So it's a variety of departments that our students work with. We also support Special Olympic Basketball Team and there are some great photos that were taken last year with our team. We provide facilities, transportation, and coaches. With our community connections, we have quarterly meetings with agencies out in the community, looking at post-secondary success for our students. We've had three of our students in our ID Autism Class be gainfully employed and two of our seniors were also gainfully employed over the past summer. Waynesville Middle School, we offer cross-categorical classes for all of our students, ID Autism Room, and we also offer co-teaching. There are some of our pictures at the middle school. We have Read 180 for English Language Arts and Reading. And then we have a special ed resource where students can work on their assignments and get specialized help, offered almost every class period. Sixth Grade Center, we're very proud that 92% of our 87 students with special needs are integrated with their regular ed peers with the co-teaching model. We also have a speech-language pathologist through teletherapy who supports our students. We also support students with autism and intellectual disabilities. These students enjoy a two-to-one staff support. We have a sensory room as well to help meet their needs. Freedom Elementary. Freedom services 180 students with IEPs and 20 students with Section 504 plans. We are happy to have a special ed classroom in every house at Freedom Elementary. Every house has an ID Autism Classroom, a cross-categorical Classroom, and then two of our houses have a Classroom designated to help students with emotional disturbance. Special ed teachers, some of the work they're doing using MobiMax for math, reading, and writing in the classroom. We have a sensory garden that they're working on at Freedom that will incorporate, we're hoping an obstacle course, we're paired with our Pi Group to help us with that, and working on a sensory box to help our students when they become overstimulated. We also have a word wall that our teachers have worked on for frequently used sightwords for our students. East Elementary, 189 students are serviced there, three cross-categorical classrooms, two autism ID classrooms, and one classroom for students with emotional disturbance. Each of the classrooms are assigned to a house at, well, at East, so we have that support. And there are some pictures of some collaborations and working on PBLs. Here's some more of the programming, Special Olympics, working on PBLs, and being creative for our students. Speech and Language Therapy Rooms, we have an in-house speech-language pathologist at East. And we also have a teletherapy program at East to help meet the needs of our students. Post-Elementary Schools, Partridge, Thayer, and Wood. At Thayer, we serve 40 special education students in three Section 504. We have cross-categorical classrooms and a speech pathologist to meet their needs. And there are some pictures of our STEM Pumpkin Patch Field Trip with Thayer and Wood special ed classes. At Wood, we service 63 special ed students in 17 Section 504s. We have two cross-categorical classrooms there and we have a post-district program to help our students who need some more support as the program that they attend. And we have speech-language pathologists and there are some Special Olympics bowling and then our fishing trip that we recently had. In Partridge Elementary, we serve 72 special ed students and six Section 504 students at Partridge. We have cross-categorical classrooms there as well, speech-language pathologists, and then they're doing an after-school awareness program where they're working with students on their interests. Williams Early Childhood Centers, where we service our three-to-five-year-olds up through kindergarten age, they have to meet criteria in one of the following areas. They're utilizing the ELK curriculum this school year. And then we have one ECSE and PACE Classroom, four ECSE classrooms, and three low incident classrooms there. There's currently 163 students in our program. Here's some of the pictures of the students. We have a variety of therapy options, individualized instruction, and gross motor time. And some sensory tubs, some technology, choice boards for center time and whole group instruction. And last but not least, Piney Ridge Learning Center. They, there we service approximately 85 students from across the United States. Over 60% have an IEP. Piney's earned bronze and silver recognition for PBIS and there's the amazing staff there that work with our students. We had academic gains last school year with our students. We had eight students in math improve more than two grade levels from when they started at Piney. And in reading, we had 11 students improve more than two grade levels. So we saw some great growth there. New to Piney, some of the service delivery models that they're utilizing is remediation, E2020 credit recovery, college and career prep, and then they have a leadership class as well. There should be a thank you. There it is. Thank you, everyone, for your support that you give our special education students. We're here to make sure that they're very successful and I, we have staff in place who are here to ensure their success. So I appreciate all that you do. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Washington.
Thank you.
Discussion B, 2017 Annual Performance Report, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Good evening. Tonight, I will be presenting the district's annual performance report from the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the 2016-17 school year. Each year, the state provides an annual performance report score and accreditation levels to districts. In order for districts to be fully accredited, they must earn at least 70% of possible points. Our district's CSIP goal is to maintain an annual performance report score of 90% or higher. Under MSIP 5, there was supposed to be an accredited with distinction category for districts that earned at least 90% of points as well as meeting additional criteria. The decision to identify those additional criteria was tabled at the state level and as such, the designation of accredited is the highest level districts can earn. They're not offering accredited with distinction at this time. Throughout the presentation, you will see charts that denote points earned for status, progress, and growth. Status is a three-year average. For status, there are four levels. If the three-year average is at the floor level, zero points would be earned. There's also a level for approaching on track in a 2020 target. And that 2020 target is the highest level that you can earn for status. Once a district has a three-year average in the 2020 target range, maximum points are earned, even if scores fluctuate up and down within that range. Status points are based on the MAP Performance Index, or MPI, and that is a number that ranges from 100 to 500 and it's based on the number of students who score advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. In ELA and math, districts can also earn points for growth. Growth points can be based, growth points are based on individual student performance over multiple years. So it's really looking at how students grow over time, who you have testing over multiple years. Progress looks at changes in the, the total group scores over time. APR points can be a combination of status points and either progress or growth, whichever is higher. In Academic Achievement, 16 points can be earned in ELA, Math and Science, and eight points in Social Studies. At this time, year-to-year comparisons are unreliable and the state cautions trying to make comparisons as we've had three sets of tests in ELA and math over the past four years. And we will have a new set of tests over the new standards in ELA, Math, and Science this spring. And then in Social Studies, which is the government, EOC, that will be coming in the upcoming years. In an effort to make scores somewhat comparable, the state creates a normal curve of as we've had three sets of tests in ELA and math over the past four years. And we will have a new set of tests over the new standards in ELA, math, and science this spring. And then in social studies, which is the government EOC, that will be coming in the upcoming years. In an effort to make scores somewhat comparable, the state creates a normal curve equivalent of all scores across the state for ELA and math to try to provide some comparisons, which is where you'll see the NCE on the chart when I get into it. Additionally, in ELA and math, this past spring, the English II EOC and Algebra I scores were, the test forms from the prior year were not considered comparable. So those scores were considered unreliable for APR purposes. Therefore, the Algebra I and English II EOC scores were removed from data calculations for 2017, which means that the 2017 scores are missing the data sets for those two tests. However, those two tests are included when you look at the 2015 and 16 scores. As a result, for ELA and math, the state implemented "hold harmless" this year, meaning that districts could not earn less APR points in ELA and math than they earned in any of the three prior years. Now, to get into the charts. In ELA, we earned nine status points based on an MPI of 365.5 points. In addition, we earned six growth points, which is that our students who tested over, who have tests over multiple years showed the expected growth that we expected them to have. So we earned 15 points. And then because of the safe harbor, because we lost the English II EOCs, we did earn one point because last year we had 16 points in that area. So we did earn that one back. In math, our status was 334 MPI points, which earned us nine status points. In growth, we exceeded growth expectations and earned 12 points and so earned the full 16 APR points in math. In science, after seeing scores dip in 2016, there was a 10-point gain from 16 to 17. The three-year average was in the 2020 target range and the full 16 points were earned. The social studies scores are based on the high school government EOC. Scores have trended downward the past three years. However, the three-year average remains in the 2020 target range and the full eight points were earned. The government curriculum has been revised this year to address gaps and to address that downward trend. As we move to subgroup achievement, it is figured in the same way as academic achievement. However, the approaching and on-track point ranges are slightly different from where they are in Standard 1. ELA, math, and science are worth four points and social studies is worth two points. The super subgroup consists of scores of any students who are African-American, Hispanic, who receive free or reduced-price lunches, who receive special education services, or who are identified as English language learners. Slightly over 60% of our students are in the super subgroup. In ELA, we earned two points for this year's performance and then because we had four points last year in ELA subgroup performance, we did earn two points for safe harbor. So we did earn a total of four points in that area. In math, we earned two points and we utilized one safe harbor point from 2016 to bring math to three points. In science, subgroup performance improved from 2016. Three points were earned in science. And in social studies, 1.5 points were earned. We continue to focus on identifying and implementing effective strategies and interventions for students in our subgroups as we work to close the gap between overall performance and subgroup performance. As we transition out of the academic achievement and subgroup achievement, we will transition into the college and career readiness. These next three sections are really related to the work our high school and career center do. CCR 1 through 3 looks at the test scores of the graduating class, so the graduating class of 2017, and how they did on the ACT, the SAT, the ASVAB, the compass, or the work keys. Any student who takes a test, you automatically earn a quarter of a point. Depending on where their scores are, you can also, so, earn .75 points, one point, or 1.25 points. So as student performance improves, you earn more points. From 2015 to 16 to 17, we've continued to see growth in this area and we earned 7.5 points for status and two points for progress for a total of 9.5 APR points in this area. CCR 3.4 looks at student enrollment and performance in advanced placement, dual-credit courses, dual-enrollment courses, project lead-the-way courses, as well as their performance on their IRCs, which is the industry-recognized credential, which is related to career-to-career education classes at WCC. As you can see, from 2015 to 16 to 17, we've continued to see growth in this area and we are, our three-year status is in the 2020 target range. So we did earn all 10 points. We did earn two progress points, but 10 is the most that you can earn in the area. So 10 is what we earned. CCR 3.5 and 6 is post-secondary follow-up. This looks at where students are six months after graduation. So this is really the class of 2016 and what they were doing last fall. And already, our high school and career center are at work starting to follow up on our students that graduated this past May. But for our class of 2016, really looking, you earn credit if students are in, attending a two-year or four-year university program or some other sort of career training. If they went through a career center path and were marked as concentrators and they are employed, you earn credit for them as meeting the follow-up definition. And also, if they're in the military, you get credit for them meeting. So it is a lot of work to track students down who are no longer here. But over the three years, as we've had a little bit of up and down, we still earned 7.5 status points, two points for progress, so a total of 9.5 APR points. Standard 4 is attendance. So I wanted to provide a little background on how attendance works because there's two different attendance numbers that districts work with. One is average daily attendance. And this is really the number of hours students attend versus the number of our potential hours. And they divide that and it gives you your overall percentage. And that's used for state funding purposes. And under ADA, a student with really good attendance can balance out a student with really poor attendance. So if you have one student with 100% and one with 90, they kind of, they average to a 95. As we looked over the past four years, our average daily attendance is pretty stable. 90/90 attendance is used for accountability purposes and what this looks at is the percentage of students who are here 90% of the time or more. So if a student's here 89.9% of the time, or if they're here 50% of the time, they count as a zero in this calculation. It doesn't matter. If they're below that 90% threshold, there is zero. If they're above it, they're essentially a one. And so the state adds all those ones and zeros up, divides it, and then you look to see what percentage of your students met that. This year, we did see a decline in that number. We did have a lot of students who were in the 88% to 89% range. And so while our ADA has remained fairly stable, we did see that decline in our 90/90 attendance. And so we're really focusing this year on making sure attendance letters are going out, that students who are struggling with attendance, that we're making those contacts to ensure that they're here because if they're not here, they can't learn. And when we looked further into our data, our students who did not meet the 90/90 rule did not perform as well when we look at our assessments, either our state assessments or our local assessments. So again, if they're not here, they can't learn. So we want to make sure that we're providing structures for them to be here. On 90/90 attendance, our three-year average was 89.4. To be at the 2020 target range, which is you earn 10 points, you have to have 90% of students here 90% of the time. Our three-year average was just below that at 89.4. So we earned 7.5 status points. Last year, we had 10 points in this area. So this was the 2.2 and 1/2 points that we did lose on our APR this year. Another metric that they look at is graduation rate and percentage of students graduating in either four years, five years, six years, or seven years. And you can earn the best of those. This is the first year that our three-year status, we have earned it with our four, five, and sixth year. So we earned full 30 points based on our three-year average of students graduating within four years, which is something to be very proud of. The national graduation average is about 87%, so, and the state average. So we're very proud of 92.1 and we're still working on those supports to keep students in school so they can, we can ensure that they graduate on time. So as we look over the past five years, which is when MSIP V started, in 2013, we were at 82.1%, but our teachers and administrators have done a lot of work to ensure that we're shoring up curriculum and teaching our standards, that we're preparing students for when they leave us and going out into the world. And we've seen our scores grow. And this year, we are at 95.7% on our annual performance report with 134 points. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Proposed job description revisions, first reading, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached job description revisions are presented for your review as a first reading. 2.22.6 Assistant Computer Technician. 3.18.2 School Nurse. 4.08.3 Project Bid Specialist. 4.08.5 Payroll and Benefit Specialist. 4.08.7 Executive Secretary Instructional Services. The administration will request approval at the regular December board meeting.
Questions or comments? D, proposed 2018-2019 school calendar, first reading, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. The proposed calendar for the 2018-2019 school year is attached for board review. Calendar options were publicized on the district webpage through October 31st, 2017, for public review and comment. A few highlights of the proposed calendar. Our new student enrollment will be on July 24th and 25th district-wide. Parent conferences will be held in the evenings of October 22nd, 23rd, and 25th, which will allow more parents to attend. A one-week spring break is built into the calendar with no inclement weather makeup days scheduled during the break. Graduation is May 17th. The last day of school is tentatively scheduled for May 21st. And administration will request approval at the regular December meeting.
Questions or comments? E, Waynesville Middle School construction update, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Don Hussman is present to provide the monthly report.
Good evening. Before we look at activities, construction activities for the latter part of October and early November, I have a couple of photographs here that I wasn't present for. Dr. Berger, I don't, I know you were present because you're in the photo. So I don't know if you can give us a little bit of an update on the tour that the Career Center students took through the middle school? And I believe that was around October 19th?
Yeah, that sounds right. DHA and CMS were great about, we proposed in a construction meeting that potentially the Career Center students could come down and do a walkthrough. And they didn't, they didn't pause much at that. CMS said, "Yeah, great idea." DHA was supportive and we brought a wave of kids down. I know Kevin was with them in each wave, I think. And so Kevin started at 9:00 AM, Dr. Patterson, and pretty much throughout the afternoon, we had kids rolling through there. And I tell you, it was received well from CMS, received very well looking for Dr. Patterson. Received, oh, I'm sorry, right by Kevin. Received very well from the students and just a great opportunity. So we appreciate Don, DHA, CMS, and the Career Center. We think that was a unique and neat opportunity for our kids. And we've kind of tentatively scheduled to do it again much later in the project.
Great. That's wonderful. We always encourage young students to walk through our buildings as long as they can be protected safely. And really, it stimulates young people moving into the various professions that are stemmed from career centers and institutions of higher learning. Okay, now on to the construction update. These are, these probably look a little old to you. They were just about a month ago, around October the 25th. You see a concrete finisher who's working in the middle section of Area B. And I know that the building is moving a lot faster now. It's beginning to really take shape like a building. But just a little bit more than a month ago, we still look like a pretty skeletal structure. During that time period, the exterior walls, you can see the metal studs were beginning to go up and it's kind of putting the skin on the skeleton, as we like to say. You can begin to see the windows forming, the window openings and such. Here's some of the craftsmen are installing, they're beginning to install the ductwork and temporary lighting is in the space now. So that's actually good to have at this time of year. It's the, some of the days are getting a little dark on us. Plumbing is proceeding. That's a photograph of one of the toilet banks with all of the massive plumbing that's associated with that. You never really quite see that because it's always buried, but the early photographs show that quite well. Exterior masonry continuing, and it has been continuing for quite some time and will continue as the temperatures begin to get a little cooler. There's always a little extra effort and protection of masonry and mortar as it's being installed. We always like to ensure that it's going in or being installed in the appropriate temperature ranges. And so that's something always to watch. That's the stair tower being constructed adjacent to the existing building. That's almost complete. Now we're into the November photographs. This was taken on the 8th, I believe. So even they are aging a little bit. You can see the yellow protection board there is going on and that's the layer that goes on and essentially encloses the building prior to the masonry or the brick, the face brick going on to that. So before, not too long, we'll begin to see face brick being installed. But here, there's, they're unloading some of the roof insulation products and starting the roofing of the building, which is very important, obviously, at this time of year so that we can move to creating the building to be essentially, not totally weather-tight, but certainly watertight so that, so that as we do expect rains and ultimately, we're going to see some snow perhaps. And that always slows down construction. So installing that roof is really an important element. Sheathing and masonry going on. It's kind of difficult to see some of the detailed work of some of the taping of the joints. It's where all of the joints have to be totally sealed before the masonry can go on. Looking from one of the stairs, you can notice the stair handrail to the lower left-hand side. The corridors are really beginning to take shape. There's a lot of interior stud work happening. So if you're walking through the building, you can really now get the sense of the school where corridors are, the classrooms, the size of the classrooms, the window openings. They're very, very large. That will be a real treat for the middle school, considering they have, I think it's 53 classrooms with no natural light. So this will be a very, very much of a transaction. That's that stairwell again. This is the, a very tall masonry wall. It's always kind of surprising to see how tall some of those walls are. And that's actually the wall that separates or that ultimately will separate the cafeteria from the kitchen area. Another view of the same wall. Last photo, this was, this is in Area A, or where the physical education element will be. And it's kind of interesting to note, you can see the top of the concrete wall. That, I believe now, is completely filled with the granular fill. So that means all of the plumbing has been set for that area. And shortly, and I'm not sure when that slab is scheduled to be poured, but it will be very soon. So that's kind of the progress of almost the last month. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Might mention, Mr. Hussman. I know Mr. Pritchard was on-site today, but we're undercover now, for the most part? Are we essentially undercover? I want to say we're undercover because Thanksgiving was going to be, yeah. Thanksgiving was going to be a benchmark for that because that takes weather out of it, for the most part. And weather, of course, is always a challenge. And if you've been down there to look, you know, we built kind of in a U, as it was. And if you've been down there to look, you know, we built kind of in a U, as it was, and everything's backing out towards H Highway, and actually, today, they started and they covered that. Mr. Pritchard reported to me, he spent some time there, down there this morning. I drove by a couple times today, and so it actually is enclosed now, or you can at least see the structural steel that's, that's enclosed it. So it's from the 6th grade center. If we're not at 2:30 and the buses aren't in there, make a spin through that parking lot and look up towards H Highway, it's a monstrosity. It's a big building, and, and it's an impressive view from that side, and I blasted that out on Twitter, so.
Great. Okay, thank you.
And we've had some drone footage on that, too, so you can catch that here and there, so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Hussman. Don, thanks, Don. Have a safe trip back to St. Louis.
Discussion Item F, MSBA Board Policy Updates, first reading, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Per our discussion last month, I mentioned that we would have several technology policies, procedures in one form, excuse me, to, for you to review. We have had our technology folks look at that and made sure it was aligned to the manual we were putting together. A couple of things, we did cross-check with our, our local attorney, so that is a, now a vetted batch of documents for you to look at for first reading.
G, Proposed Course Description Book Changes for 2018-19, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Attached for a first reading are the recommended changes to the Waynesville High School Course Description Books submitted by Mrs. Long, the high school principal, and the Waynesville Career Center Course Description Books submitted by Dr. Patterson, Director of WCC. If approved, these will become effective with the 2018-19 school year and utilized in the upcoming scheduling process at the respective buildings. We will be bringing these for approval in December.
13 Action Item. A, MSBA Full Maintenance Service Agreement, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This is our yearly reapproval of our board policies through MSBA. You'll see the annual sum of $4,156 as the cost for our annual membership to the MSBA policy service, so I would recommend that for approval.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Dr. Fulmer. Mr. Keeling, second. All in favor? Show hands. Six-oh, Megan? In favor? MS, uh, let's see here. MSBA Policy and Procedure Updates, second reading, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. We did not receive any questions or comments from the first reading, so these are offered for your approval this evening. Rather large back, batch of policies, procedures, and reference forms, based on tabs. We've, we've received no additions or revisions to those, and we'll be here, we'll be, have it ready for you for approval right now.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keeling makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dr. Fulmer, second. All in favor? Show hands. Six-oh, yes. Action Item C, candidate, or Board Candidate Filing Dates, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. It's that time of year again, believe it or not. It's amazing how fast it goes, but Board Candidate Filing Dates for the April 3, 2018 General Municipal Election are Tuesday, December 12, 2017, through Tuesday, January 16, 2018. Candidates may file at the superintendent's office during their regular office hours, which are 7:30 to 4:00 p.m. Filing will not occur on the following holidays when the school district's offices are closed, December 22nd, 25th, 26th, January 1st, 2nd, and 15th of 2018. Extreme and clement weather might also necessitate unplanned office closure as per statute. Office hours will be extended to 5:00 p.m. on January 16, 2018, for the deadline for filing. Paul D. Schultz and Andy Anderson currently hold the board member positions that will be open.
Do I have a motion? Mr. Quinn makes the motion. Mr. Keeling, second. All in favor? Show hands. Six-oh, yes. And that three years goes by fast. Action Item D, 2018-2019 School Calendar Opening Date, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. Administration is seeking approval of a proposed opening date more than 10 days before the first Monday in September for the 2018-2019 school year, please.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keeling, second. Mr. Anderson, all in favor? Show hands. Six-oh, yes. Proposed Job Description Revision, second reading, Mrs. Bells.
The following attached job description revisions are presented as a second reading. 2.21.1 Director of Curriculum and Instructional Technology. 2.47.1 Data Processing Director. 4.08.1 Executive Secretary to the Superintendent. 4.08.6 Purchasing Accounts Payable Specialist. 4.08.8 Student Information Specialist. 4.31.4 Food Service Lunch Program Secretary. The administration requests approval of the above-named job descriptions as presented, please.
Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Mr. Anderson. Mr. Dr. Fulmer, second. All in favor? Show hands. Six-oh, yes. And Action Item F, Fiscal Year 17 Audit, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Yes, Rebecca, Ms. Rebecca Frederick from KPM is here to present the audit. Ms. Frederick, I hope you do not think putting you last on the agenda is payback for the excruciating audit you put us through. It is not.
I was wondering that, and then I thought, maybe, right, you saved the best for last.
Best for last.
But I know everybody here is thinking, oh, no, an audit. I promise I talk fast. You guys are really lucky, and I will be very brief. You guys may all have a copy in front of you. I'm actually not going to go through the hard copy, going to do the more brief version. So I do encourage you to read the report. It's 52 pages long, and there's some good information in there, but I'm just going to briefly summarize it today. As Dr. Berger said, I'm Rebecca Frederick. I'm a CPA with KPM CPAs out of Springfield, and we have audited the district's financial statements as of June 30, 2017. And when we're here, we also have to do a federal compliance audit, and we also review state complaints. So there's three different types of audits that we're doing when we come. The first, first, I guess, I will say that this district has received an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best opinion that you can receive on your financial statements. So congratulations, that's consistent with previous years. The cash balances of the district increased about 5.8 million from the previous year. The general fund decreased about 829,000, leaving the general fund with almost 25 percent reserves, which is a really good reserve. We recommend three months, and that's just right under three months. And what that means, if you didn't receive any more revenue, you'd still be able to pay normal operating expenses in the general fund and the teachers' fund for three months. The chances that you're not going to receive any revenue are very slim, but it is good to have that savings there just in case. And the capital projects fund increased almost 6.7 million, and I believe the district's been kind of building that balance for this big project. Okay. The next, the single audit is what I want to go over next. Anytime some government spends over $750,000 in federal funds, you have to have what's called a single audit or a federal compliance audit. The district had $25.6 million in federal funds this year, so we had several programs that we had to test. There's different requirements when we have to test certain programs. We always have to test impact aid because it is the largest program. And this year, we also test compliance with the special education program and also the food service program, and I am happy to report that we did not have any, we have no non-compliance to report on those programs. Okay, the last, what, it's called an examination. DESI provides a schedule of selected statistics each year, and it provides information that they want us to look at. So throughout the year, the district's providing attendance information, transportation, different reporting requirements that DESI wants us to come in and make sure that your student records match that information that you're submitting to them. And we have to report that in the audit report to DESI, and I'm also happy to report that we have no non-compliance in the state programs as well. The last thing I want to go over is what is called our management letter. This is where we have recommendations for the district. The only recommendation that we have is regarding new coding. I don't know if you guys have talked about that, that new coding that's effective July 1 of 2018, and we're just reminding the district to become familiar with the new requirements and try to get any training that you can. July 1 will be here before you know it. One of the biggest obstacles that I see is identifying every expenditure has to have a source code saying how you spent, how that, what funds paid for that expense, whether it's local, county, state, or federal funds. Every single expenditure has to have that code. Hopefully, DESI will provide some guidance on how the district's supposed to come up with that information, but we just wanted to remind you to be aware that that is coming soon. Does anybody have any questions?
Very good.
Okay, great. Well, I just wanted to let the board know that the district is just always very welcoming to us. We were a little reluctant to come this year because of the software change. You know, the, the student records, yeah, and, I mean, switching accounting and student records, that's always a nightmare for an auditor. There were a few bumps in the road, but I think, all in all, the audit went really well. And I think the district, I think next year, I think you'll be very well-prepared, but it's, that's a hard ordeal to go through, and the audits still went very well, and the business office just does such a good job at handling our needs while we're here and getting us everything that we need, and we appreciate that. And really, everyone that we come in contact with at the district, we don't just work with the business office, but everybody's very professional, and we appreciate that, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you. And, Mr. Schultz, we do need action on that, please.
Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 17 audit? Mr. Anderson makes the motion. Mr. Quinn, second. Show of hands in favor. Six-oh, yes. Before we get out of here, I hope everybody has a very happy Thanksgiving to everybody here, teachers, our patriots out in the neighborhood makes all this possible for us, our friends from Fort Wood. Also, this week, we had a family member from Freedom lost his brother, Mr. and Mrs. Thompson. Keep them in our thoughts and prayers during this time. And with that being said, there is a need to go to closed session, closed record, closed vote is allowed by RSMO 610.021, Section 1, Legal Activities; Section 2, Real Estate; Section 3, Hiring, Firing, Discipline, Disciplining and Promotion of Employees; Section 6, Scholastic Probation, Expulsion; Graduation of Unidentifiable Individuals; and Section 13, Individual Personnel Records, Performance Ratings. Motion to enter into closed session. Mr. Derry makes the motion. Mr. Anderson, second. All in favor? Roll call vote.
Vote. Roll call vote.
Yes, roll call. Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, we are going to closed session.